Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to the Monday, October 18th, 6:30 public hearing to order. In accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker, March 10, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 38 and 20, Quincy City Council will be convening these public hearings via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access TV, QA TV, Channel QA TV 9, Quincy Access. This public hearing is on order. 2021-096 Utility Grant of Location Mass Electric Marymount Parkway. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the Raise the Hand feature or dial *91 on your phone when you are called upon. Please state your name and address. So there was no written correspondence. Correspondences have been received by the Clerk of Committees for this item. So let's see, is there anybody raising their hand in opposition or in favor? None being said. So seeing no further public comment, I'll close this public hearing at 6:31. I keep my record ahead on time. But we'll be back with the Quincy City Council meeting at 6:35 in about three minutes. Thank you, folks.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico.
President.
Counselor Kane. Counselor Dubana.
President.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
President Liang.
Present.
Eight members, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If we could all just put ourselves on mute in honor of all the women and men serving both here and abroad, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you read the meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Charles D. Baker, June 16, 2021, extending certain provisions of the meeting law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, this Quincy City Council will be convening via remote video conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QA TV, Channel QA TV 9, Government Access. First item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
2021-097 In ordinance amending Chapter 375 of the zoning, 4.1 Table of Dimensional Requirements, and 10.0 Defining Adding Lot Coverage.
Motion to waive the reading, Counselor Palmucci.
I just didn't want to hear the whole thing read. I have nothing else to say about it. I guess put it into ordinance. I don't know if the mayor's representative wanted to say anything about it.
Sure. So we have a motion to move this to ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counselor Andronico. Mr. Walker, is there anything that you had wanted to comment on this?
Re-remember, President, the body is in receipt of a memo from the mayor sort of outlining the issues at hand with this piece of legislation. We certainly welcome the reference to committee and look forward to discussion on this.
Thank you. And I know that was just sent over. So folks have a chance to look at it before we meet in committee. That would be great. Are there any questions or comments on this before we move this to committee? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move that to ordinance. Number two, please, Madam Clerk.
Number two, 2021-098 A resolve seeking a hearing to discuss Fox Rock's compliance with land disposition agreement.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you. I think to my fellow colleagues, if you've read the two resolutions, I think they speak for themselves. But just to kind of put my feelings behind it into perspective, I really just, you know, patience has run out from my perspective on Fox Rock's development of the Rosslot. It's been five years that we've been waiting for them to build in Quincy Center. If this development were a child, it would be in kindergarten already. It has been a long time. Nothing's been built. I read in the paper last month that they have yet again changed their plan. That's got to be at least the sixth or seventh time that I've seen them change their plan. Quite frankly, it's just a long time for Fox Rock to pick a plan and put a shovel in the ground already. Or they should just step aside and allow a competent developer to take over. They've really shown that they're great at drawing pretty pictures of what buildings could look like, but entirely incapable of building. The city's giving them millions of dollars worth of land. And I don't know if the problem is incompetence or indecision or what with them, but we have nothing to show for it, nothing to show for it. And let me just say, I have a tremendous amount of respect for Rob Hale. I do. He's an incredible community partner, a real asset to Quincy. And I was on the council when he came to the city and said he was considering moving Granite Telecommunications to, I believe it was North Carolina. And he requested tax breaks in order to stay and create local jobs, stay in North Quincy where they were. And the city council at that time, we approved the tax breaks. And he kept every promise that he made and then some. Right now, I believe that Granite Telecommunications is now the largest employer in the city. I mean, that's far and above what he had promised to do when he appeared before us asking for those tax breaks. I live near Furnas Brook Parkway in Copeland Street, and I take the kids out for a walk all the time around the neighborhood. And I always point out the building on the corner. And I tell them they're sick of me telling them. But I tell them that Rob Hale started Granite Telecommunications in that little office above the Lamp Store on Copeland Street. And from there, he built a billion-dollar business. It's really an amazing lesson in hard work and perseverance, one that I certainly try to impress upon my kids, that you can build something that incredible from above a Lamp Store, right? A little tiny office above a Lamp Store. I have no doubt that his commitment, Rob Hale's commitment, can be relied upon. And I trust what he says. Unfortunately, he doesn't run the day-to-day at Fox Rock. And Fox Rock has traded on Rob Hale's goodwill and reputation to obtain the land in the first place. They've made multiple public commitments, and they've backed away from them repeatedly. Since 2006, they've made promise after promise. Not only have they not delivered, but they keep changing their plans. If it wasn't for Rob Hale's involvement, the city would have dumped them, I suggest, a long time ago, like we did with Streetworks, as they did the same thing, lots of ideas but no action. And so one of the things that bothers me the most about this is that the city gave up our ownership rights to the medical center, the Quincy Medical Center land, on the promise that hospital services would come downtown, that the hospital services were losing at Quincy Medical Center after Fox Rock purchased it, not because of them, but after they purchased it, that those same medical services would be replicated downtown. And now they're saying it'll be biotech space. They made a commitment also to build affordable housing. And now they're saying that the units will be market rate. The quote in the paper was, well, we'll go before the Affordable Housing Trust Committee to figure out what's going to be affordable. That's not what they promised us, this body. Everyone else voted for this. I voted to give the land to them based on those representations about replication of medical services and affordable housing. And in fact, I had so little confidence in Fox Rock at that time in their word that I added the provision that said if they didn't build affordable housing on the Rosslot area, that they'd give the city the land back for a dollar. So the purpose of this resolution is I'd like to hear from them. I'd like them to come and discuss in a public place, not just to the ledger, what they plan to do and whether they plan to keep the commitments and the promises that they've made to the public and to the city and to the city council, as well as how they intend to honor the LDA that we approved and that they signed, as well as what the timeline for building something is. And so the resolution calls for them to come before the council and provide us with information relative to the LDA. Hopefully, their plans won't change again before they appear. I'd ask that this resolution be referred to ordinance, the downtown committee, as well as public safety.
Thank you, Counselor Palmucci. So we have a motion to... Did you want to move it to ordinance or oversight? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, oversight. Yeah, I move approval and to those committees.
So this to our readers, so there's a motion to approve as well as to move to oversight, downtown, and public safety. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counselor Andronico. Any questions or comments on this item before we move forward? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane. Counselor Dubana.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Eight members.
Item passes. Number three, please, Madam Clerk.
2021-099 A resolve seeking Fox Rock to provide information regarding local hiring and worksite safety.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you. It's a similar resolution, less asking about the details of the LDA and the plans and more asking for Fox Rock to just give us an indication as to where they stand. My understanding is that they've hired a general contractor or a close-to-hiring one. So I think it's important for this council to know at this point and to discuss with them at this point whether or not they plan on hiring Quincy folks, local tradesmen and women, as well as how they intend to maintain public safety from some of the things that we got into a couple of years ago with the Wage Theft Ordinance and those matters. I think it's important to have these discussions before they start work, if they ever do. So I'd ask that this also be referred to oversight or I move approval and ask that it be referred to oversight, downtown, committee, and public safety.
Thank you, Counselor. So there's a motion to approve as well as to move to oversight, downtown, and public safety. Do we have a second? Second, my Counselor Mahoney. Any questions or comments on this item before we move forward? Counselor Mahoney?
Just a quick question. Thank you, Counselor Palmucci, for bringing this board, both resolutions, both of these board. I do have a question through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Walker. I know that the reverter, we were waiting forever for the memorandum of understanding to start. It looks like it's been signed. Has the city received, or through Madam Auditor, has the city received the $4.5 or $4.2 million that they were supposed to get off of the hospital site?
Through you, Madam President, we have.
Okay. And then my next question was that, you know, with all this, I guess this is a question through you, Madam President, and through Counselor Palmucci. I know that we just moved all of this into committees. But I do think this is something that we need to stay on top of. And I would suggest that we start making those meetings ASAP, because we actually had another one, another resolve similar where we were asking, we were asking Fox Rock to come before us before. This is really important because this is a complete change. And I did not support the LDA, but this is a complete change of what we're reading in the paper, what they're proposing. And, you know, the reverter is gone, so the hospital site gone, we know that. But basically, they've gotten two lots of land and we've gotten, from what we understand from the newspaper articles, none of what was promised. So I'd say that we should be having these hearings ASAP, hopefully by the next meeting, next meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this before we move forward? Great. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Dubana.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. So we'll move on to number four, please, Madam Clerk.
Number four is 2021-100 A resolve to reaffirm partnership between...
Motion to waive the reading. I'd like to recognize Counselor Harris.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Of course, I want to first thank, of course, over the last, the last time we spoke about the, my, our actually partners in the fight against the Long Island Bridge, I'd like to first thank all the councilors who have supported the last time we spoke and when they appeared in front of us. And this resolution that's in front of us would help to affirm partnership between the city council and the MICDI governments. That's our friends, the Native Americans, who, you know, I've been working with them for the last three years. And, you know, them and thank you to the folks on this council and the administration, the fight that we've put up that has actually, and again, COVID was actually an unfortunate partner in this where we have kind of slowed things down and stopped things. But the governments, the Native American governments have, we need, it's about an environmental impact review be ordered. We're looking, that's what we're looking for on the proposed bridge. And that's still a fight that's actually very quietly going on. This resolution would in turn is an olive branch to the new administration of the incoming mayor of the city of Quincy, city of Boston, I'm sorry. By passing this resolution, the Quincy City Council will help lay the groundwork for future meeting between Quincy officials, the MICD governments, our Native American friends, and the federal congressional delegation here in Quincy to begin a process to implement the federal law for Boston Harbor Islands National Park. What should really happen, and before I keep going on, I'm going to go offline a little bit off of what I have prepared, is Long Island should be like several of the other islands should be a national park, protecting the rights of burial grounds that are there. And I think that it's really important, and you know what? Some people will say that the city of Quincy is taking advantage of a situation where we're using this. But as I've been working for three years, I can't even imagine, when you think about the travesty that took place with Dare Island and what took, the landfill that was brought to Granite Links. Our own Mayor Sheets, I believe, was involved with trying to stop it because it was the wrong thing to do. So, and especially now that we're in a time where we're talking about what has gone wrong throughout all the periods of time. It's just, it's overwhelming at times when I'm talking with the folks from, which I've been working with over the last almost two and a half years, almost three years about this and with my friends at the Native American group that have asked and asked me to jump in. But it's also helped me jump in in order to help the people of Quincy, people I represent, people we all represent. Because what really has been going on is, remember, the former mayor of Boston, he declared Long Island Economic Opportunity Zone, which meant there's going to be development on that island, no matter what anybody says, no matter what candidate and there's folks that live in Quincy like myself. I lived three streets from Mayor Walsh when he was younger than me, much younger than me. I coached one of the candidate's husband in Little League in Savin Hill. And of course, the representative that, the problem that's going on with Methanol Mile, the Bakers that lived three streets down from me on Sprig Garden Street, they, what's going on in Boston is horrible. And there's no easy out on what's going on in the south end of Boston. So there's a lot of folks that live in Quincy. And folks don't realize the problem, not the problem, but the solution to the problem is not what we're talking about. And there's other things that, such as, sorry, my passion with this, you know, with the people I represent is overwhelming. And I have folks that live in where I grew up because I'm OFD. It's very, very difficult. And when I learn about, and I'm going to now go back to reading my notes, the Indian tribes got treated very poorly by the Federal Partnership Board as the board voted to violate the law for the park, which requires Native American burial grounds protection and preservation policies and programs. So the islands could be developed as Boston and other board members wanted to. And this is what I was alluding to, as those policies and programs were left out. Not only does the federal law for the park need to be complied with as it was originally intended, the federal law needs to be amended to give Quincy and other non-Boston municipalities, which have Harbor Island seats on the partnership, which is currently not the case. So what I just said, I'll try to explain it to you, is that there's a board and there's two boards. One of them is a board that says they, the islands, certain islands owned by Boston. But there's an island that's not owned by Boston, and that's Moon Island. That is technically, so if you owned a house, for instance, like Mayan in Squanum, we pay taxes, so forth, so on. And but it falls within the border. And the argument always has been with this, with the fight with the Long Island Bridge has been that Long Island falls within, Moon Island falls, and it's one of the islands that's probably the smallest, it is the smallest, of the Boston Harbor Islands. And we have the Three Pylons that go out to Long Island. That falls within us, and we have no say. Again, Mayor Sheets, everybody has said, I believe that Mayor Sheets fought for us to be on this board, and we should be on the board. And I know there's folks that's probably out there, if they're out there, and they listen. The key is the fact that Quincy doesn't have a say. And many other municipalities, such as Hull, Hull Winthrop, they have that same boundary, and they're not getting a say of how the Harbor Islands are being dealt with. There's two different boards. But unfortunately, we're not. So I'm going to be presenting a little bit better the next time I come in front of you on the, because it's so complicated. It's absolutely crazy. I wish I was a lawyer. I should have kept going to school, but I didn't. But all I can say is that this resolution will help Native American councils that have grouped with us, who have already sent many, many other... We sent out a letter in 2019 supporting them. The governments with the city of Quincy and the passage of this resolution would help affirm and strengthen government-to-government relationships. And that's the olive branch we're sending out with this resolution in order, and I apologize for me rambling, and I shouldn't have, would strengthen those government-to-government relations. This is something that is really important to us. And it will save taxpayers money if we can come to it. We've already spent $457,000 we spent with legal fees.
I believe so, but I would just have to check my records, Counselor.
I believe it's right in that amount.
Every, in that ballpark.
I'm off maybe by 20 cents or 30 cents. But folks say, why are we fighting this in other areas of the city? And they don't realize that if this ever happens, remember, Boston declared Economic Opportunity Zone. They're going to develop it. One of the candidates has already said that they're for the bridge. And that person is, I don't even go there. I think that we extend the olive branch and hope that, and hope that they will work in partnership with the Native American councils, the city of Quincy, and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So there's a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Okay, Counselor Dubana, thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? Counselor Palmucci?
Yes, I just, I'm happy to support this measure. I just wanted to commend Counselor Harris for his tenacity in this and really leaving no stone unturned in his effort to protect the residents of his ward. I don't know that I would have personally, given my personality, would have sought the soft touch again, the soft approach. But I commend him for doing so, really trying again with them to reset the relationship and have a constructive conversation, which we've really never been able to do with past administrations. I know I read in the Globe recently that a new study or something came out that the city of Boston had commissioned that said the ferry service was not a legitimate option. I don't know if anyone's been down there at Mass and Gas and seen the, just, I mean, it's hamster-damned down. It's disgraceful for so many reasons, none, not the least of which is just the human tragedy that there are just people who have just been given up on and allowed to just live in squalor. I mean, driving past that, I can't, you know, it struck me, I drove by past it recently, and it struck me as, I cannot believe that they have not started working on the recovery center and just done it by ferry. I mean, why fight it? They, the city of Boston... in the situation at Mass and Cass calls for a recovery center, perhaps more so than any other city in America right now. And for them to, to not be opting to take the, the easier path and then perhaps continue to fight us over the bridge, but at least get the ferry going and get people some help. It just, it baffles me. So I commend Counselor Harris for his efforts on this and certainly support it. And fingers crossed that we can, we can have some constructive conversations with him.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments on this before we move forward? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilor Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBarna.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Let's move on to number five, please, Madam Clerk.
Twenty twenty-one dash zero one zero one, resolve.
Motion to waive the reading. I'd like to recognize Council Harris.
Thank you. This, I'm, I'm not going to keep you long on this one. I'm, and, and thank you for your indulgence on indulgence on the last resolve. When I left for Aruba last Saturday morning, Quincy Shore Drive was pitch black. And I said, okay, I have to get the resolve that I promised my constituents here tonight. Since then, work is being done. I drove by and they're working on it. And that's, and from what I understand, this is all a national grid situation. No matter what, on a state level with the, state level, state level with the DCR or whoever was controlling the number of calls I had to make for six months. And I think that the city, I think the state and the city has been very, 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 very fortunate that there wasn't a catastrophe when you talk about from CVS all the way down to Aptor Street. And one, anybody who doesn't know it, just before the, the First Yard Club, I think that's, I, I, I always mix them up. So I'm not going to even talk about that. But all I can say is that we're very fortunate that I have not been reported that there's any, any injuries to anybody who either walked, walked during the evening or drove during the evening, got, got injured. But I can only say that the irresponsibility of the fact that six months later, now, I, I don't know whether or not it was because of phone calls or whether or not I had said this resolve was going to take place and we were going to make a little bit of noise about this. And then I, I, I saw that National Grid through a correspondence with Representative Ayers and one of my constituents that I copied Representative Ayers to, whether or not that this caused National Grid to have a, a file lit underneath them. But all I can say is I'm not going to ask, I'm going to withdraw this resolution. But as I move forward, just to send a message, I went, as the Public Works, sorry, I don't have my video on, the Public Works as, as the chairman, I'm not going to ask anybody else to do what I'm going to do. I'm going to table or I'm not, in Ward Six, anything coming out of National Grid from Ward Six, I am not going to give a motion to approval motion because it's disgraceful what the anxiety, the anxiety of the, of my constituents was sent to us. I think other, other councilors heard it. I, I'm sure the at-large councilors heard about it. And the fact that the state, you know, that I don't even want to go with the state, what the folks at the state dealt with, our state legislature, Bruce Ayers, who always does a great job, Senator Keenan, Tacky Chan. They do, they, they are very responsive, but six months in dock and it's still not lit up, but now the polls and everything is starting to happen. And it wasn't happening, it didn't start happening until I was down in Aruba, which is great. It had nothing to do with me, I'm sure. But all I can say is that I think that any, anything out of Ward Six for grant of new locations is not going to happen for me. So they can wait six months, if they want to wait six months to treat the people I represent, treat the people they send bills every month to, National Grid. And you know, we all get those bills. So I just want to thank everybody for my indulgence on this. I'm withdrawing, withdrawing it, but I'm not going to ask my other councilors, I will not be opposed to any granted locations unless somebody from one of the other wards asks me to. But as far as Ward Six is concerned, they can wait six months from now because that's what the people I represented had to deal with. So thank you, thank you very much. I'm sorry about my indulgence tonight. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Harris. So you'd like to withdraw this resolve, is that correct?
Absolutely, yes, I have to, yes. Because the work is, the work is finally started, six months later.
Sounds good. And then I just want to confirm, I apologize if not, but just with Madam Clerk, is there any motion or anything that we need to do to withdraw this resolve?
No, I'll make a note on it and file it away. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Counselors. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the approval of previous meeting minutes from October fourth, twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Andronico. Any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes passed. Moving on to communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards. Okay. Unfinished business in proceeding meeting. Moving right along, reports of committees. I'd like to recognize Counselor Harris.
Thank you. Again, Public Works Committee items to be passed. So utility grant, twenty twenty-one oh nine six, utility grant, Mass Electric Marymount Parkway. Positive recognition from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCarthy. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBarna.
Yes.
Council Harris. Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Yeah, item passes. Moving on to presentations of petitions, memorials and remonstrance. Okay, motions, orders and resolutions. Okay, and lastly, scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. All right, folks, just want to remind everybody that our next regularly scheduled council meeting is Monday, November eighth at six thirty, followed by one on Monday, November fifteenth, where we'll have a public hearing in ordinance, which we're going to just confirm scheduling offline. Any other scheduling of committee meetings and other council meeting changes will be posted. And before, a quick motion to adjourn, just want to remind folks that we do have the upcoming election on November second, so make sure to get to the polls and vote. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.